In session. Councilmember Cunningham. After you've received your spiritual advice.
I don't know.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. All right, council stand in session. Let's go to roll call.
Ms. Romero. Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Durham.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Feenberry.
Here.
Mr. Kozaczek. Mayor Rothschild.
Here. Item two.
Invocation, pledge of allegiance and appointments to boards, committees and commissions.
Two is just invocation and pledge of allegiance.
My apologies.
Okay, well, we'll do the invocation and pledge of allegiance. How about that? Councilmember Scott's been here a long time. She knows what happens next. The invocation will be given by Rabbi Reuven Barker from Congressional Anshayn Shur. After the invocation, I ask you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
As a rabbi and Jewish educator, I offer these prayers for our children and their education. I gave my social media community the opportunity to share their prayers on this crucial subject and will incorporate their prayers as part of this invocation. The world only exists on account of the breath of children at the schoolhouse. This statement was made by Rabbi Raish Lakish in the name of Rabbi Yehuda, the magistrate, around 2,000 years ago, recorded in the Talmud. The issue of education perennially remains the central way to shape our society, to make the ultimate investment in our future. The breath of our children engaged in learning ensures that our civilization will persist, that order will prevail over chaos, that future generations will preserve, build and create. On that same page in Talmud, Rabbi Hamnuna suggests that the inverse is true too, that Jerusalem was destroyed because children stopped attending the schoolhouse. We know this violent reality in our society all too intimately. I share with you a prayer by Dan Alexander, the chief administrative officer at Great Lakes Academy Charter School in Chicago. He offers this prayer in the wake of a drive-by shooting late at night last week outside the school where a young man and woman were badly injured. I pray for God to help us construct schools, economy, law and religion, to cause our young people to have the inner strength to reject gangs and the violence they bring. How do we teach our children this basic tenet of choosing life? One of my main mentors, my mother-in-law, addresses this fundamental question with a prayer she shares. "A Prayer on Learning for a Child I Love," by Sally Weber. What do I want you to learn? To speak, to read, to write, of course, and to excel, but to excel in learning from all around you, the people who love you, the people who don't, the people you agree with, the people you don't, those who speak loudly, those who speak softly. I want you to learn that you have a moral base. I want you to excel in discerning how to share that with the world. I want you to learn to say yes and also how to say no, and to understand why you're making those choices. I want you to learn from the love that's offered, that you have love to give. I want you to learn that you will always be loved. Her prayer challenges us to ensure that the basic skills we prioritize in our schools don't replace basic human values that we must teach our children so that they understand that they matter in an absolute way. The family is the primary place where we teach our children these lessons of being loved, yet transformative teaching the classroom at every age emanates from relationships between teacher and student and student and student. One of my former students who now lives in Jerusalem, Daphna Gutman, shares her prayer that recognizes how this profound encounter must be the basis of how we encounter our children, how we educate our children. May we be guided and successful in educating and providing a space for our children to express their needs and desires to us freely and without shame, for them to know that they are seen, cared for and supported, after which they will go on to do wonderful things in the world. I add my own humble prayer to these prayers. May we educate our children to appreciate the beauty of nature and mystery of existence, to simply learn how to be kind, to have hope. I am grateful how these public forums, city council and social media can be used as a powerful and positive force for change in our society. May God establish the work of the hands of our educators, our public policymakers, our religious leaders, our parents and the hands of our children as we shape this world. Thank you. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To item two C.
Appointments to boards, committees and commissions.
City manager's communication number 150 dated May 21 is received into and made part of the record. May I have a motion to approve the appointments in the report?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the appointments of Joseph Patterson to the Barrio Historical Historic Zone Advisory Board and Eric Stanford to the Commission of Food, Security, Heritage and Economy.
Got a motion and second and discussion on those matters. Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Is Mr. Pass or Mr. Stanford here this evening? We thank you for your service on all of these commissions, which we know is done on volunteer time and very helpful to our community. Are there any personal appointments we made at this time? Hearing none. We'll move on to item three.
Mayor and council report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 151 dated May 21 is received into and made part of the record. This time it's been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? Councilmember Feenbress.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Saturday, May 11th, as council member and proud veteran of the United States Army, I had the privilege to read the City of Tucson proclamation recognizing the 100th anniversary of the American Legion. Tucson commemoration took place at Tucson's Greyhound Park. Congratulations to all the organizers for a successful event. On Friday, May 17th, I had the privilege of attending and speaking at the dedication of the H.S. Lopez Family Foundation Center for Opportunity located at the former Holodome and Holodome. This center will host 30 service providers and agencies to help those in need. This center, a wonderful collaboration with the faith-based community and the private sector. I want to congratulate Humberto Lopez, Sarina Lopez and the H.S. Lopez Family Foundation for their work in the community and for purchasing the former hotel to develop into the center for opportunity. I want to thank Pastor Roy Tolgren and Lisa Chastain of the Gospel Rescue Mission for their work in developing this into a center to help those in need. I also want to thank Dan Ranieri with La Frontera as well for his leadership in helping to develop at the center. I want to thank Tucson Mayor Jonathan Rothschild, council member Steve Kozaczek and the Ward Six staff, the Ward One council office staff, council member Paul Durham and the Tucson City Manager Michael Ortega and Assistant City Manager Albert Elias for attending this dedication. On Saturday, May 18th, I had the privilege of attending, speaking and presenting Ward Five certificates of appreciation and medallions of hope at the 24th Annual Christian Soldiers' Prayer Breakfast held at the Vicount Hotel. I want to thank evangelist Sherri Jackson for the opportunity to speak at the breakfast. I want to congratulate all the honorees and the organizing committee for their work on the breakfast. On Saturday, May 18th, also, we had a free spray and neuter clinic held in the Little Town area at Craigcroft Elementary in Ward Five. My office and Aseved Charities organized this with the help of the Sunnyside School District to help control the pet population. I want to thank Maria Sin and Aseved Charities for their help and work for this clinic. On Friday, May 24th, a contingent of elected officials and representatives from groups and organizations will be joining me to go over to the Southern Arizona VA Hospital to present thank you cards to veterans who are at the hospital and to the VA's hospital staff. Student and classes from 15 schools across Tucson and Pima County made more than 2,300 thank you cards and letters for this Memorial Day event. Thank you to the students and teachers from Banks Elementary School, Borman K-8 School, Carrillo, Challenger Middle School, Cottonwood Elementary, Craigan Elementary, Drachman Montessori K-8 School, Hollinger K-8 School, Mesquite Elementary School, Mexicaioth Academy, Robert Naylor K-8 Schools, Southside Community School, Vale Academy, Vale Innovative Center and Wright's Elementary School. On Thursday, May 30th, the groundbreaking for the new J-TED Innovative Learning Center at the Tucson Marketplace at the Bridges will take place. I want to thank BFL Construction, Bourne Companies, PDSD and J-TED for working together to make this new innovative learning center a reality. Our community lost two great leaders and advocates in Betty Liggins and Pat Hubbard. Betty Liggins devoted her life to help improve their health and well-being on the South Side and improving the quality of life in Sunland Gardens, Los Vistas. As a Lulac State Director, I worked with Betty to get a trailer from Sunt Construction for her to do health clinics on the South Side for people in need. And Pat Hubbard devoted her life to animals. Her work with the Pima County Animal Control and Owasa led to many pets finding homes and more importantly, immunizations, microchipping and many spay and neuter clinics helped to help control the pet population. I worked with Pat to set up the free spay and neuter clinics in Ward Five and more than 2,000 dogs and cats have been spayed and neutered, immunized and microchipped in Ward Five in the past four years with the most recent clinic held in the Little Town area. They both will be missed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to item four.
Oh, Your Honor.
No report?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer my time.
Hold on, we missed him. Councilmember Cunningham.
I have several announcements, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
The American Kennel Club states that every year, one-third of dogs can become lost. Microchipping them goes a long way to help ensure that your dog will get back to you safely. That's why the Palaverdy Park Neighborhood Association is working with Pima Animal Care Shelter to put on a free microchip event for dogs, June 1st, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Arizona Beer House, 150 South Colb, and that's a pretty exciting event. In the meantime, the Palaverdy Park Neighborhood Association is also hosting a movie in the park on May 24th at 7:30. The movie being screened is the original Jurassic Park. We'll be hosting a town hall at Ward Two on June 5th at 5:30 at the Ward Two office. Speakers include officials from the Police Department, Transportation Department and Parks and Recreation Department. If you want RSVP now, you can send an email to odessa.dreyheim@tussonaz.gov or call my office at 791-4687. Speaking of Palaverdy Park Neighborhood Association, we'll be dedicating the Palaverdy Park splash pad next month. We're really excited for that. And one last announcement, just because it's fresh in my mind and brand new, the University of Arizona Women's Golf Team qualified for the semifinals this afternoon in very dramatic fashion, so I'm happy to report that. Thank you.
Okay, item four.
City managers report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 152 dated May 21 is received into and made part of the record. This time it's been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer my time to City Attorney Mike Rankin.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to wish a happy birthday to my beautiful and talented daughter, Sophia, who turned 20 years old today.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item five.
Liquor license applications. Report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 153 dated May 21 is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, the only license request on this evening's agenda is item 5D1, an acquisition of control for Sentinel Peak East in Ward Two, so an appropriate motion would be to forward the liquor license to the state liquor board with a recommendation of approval.
May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, move forward the liquor license to the state liquor board with a recommendation of approval.
Got a motion and second. Any further discussion on that matter? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? That motion carries. Go to item six.
Call to the audience.
At this time, any member of the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue except for items scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Please make sure you've read the information on the back of the speaker's card before making your presentation. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call to the audience is scheduled to last for 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review a matter, ask it to be placed on a future agenda or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. Now, there is, before we go to call to the audience, item eight, we do have a speaker who wanted to be heard on that. Councilmember Durham, my understanding, you'll be making a motion to continue that public hearing? Okay, so I'm going to allow that speaker to speak during call to the audience if he so chooses.
Mr. Mayor and council, my name is Jonathan Salvatira. I'm a resident of Tucson area and a native Tucsonan, real estate broker and a retired Constituent representation for Ward One by incumbent councilman since 2007, Rahina Romero, has weathered a rocky road of broken promises, misinformation, special interest favors and overtaxation without representation for Ward One taxpayers in her ward. And under her watch, the El Rio, the Rio Nuevo exploitation debacle took place. Following this were a series of aggressive changes to restructure the city of Tucson's budget in a serious depression over the Rio Nuevo.
That's not you yet.
During the Rio Nuevo district, city of Tucson and U of A involvement in the disappearance of $230 million of taxpayer bond money. In the outcome, neither the Arizona, the Attorney General Office or the FBI felt compelled to press charges after the final disclosures completion, December 12th, 2012. Mayor Rothschild had been in office a year at that point and his law firm was deeply involved in prior litigation, defense, billing several hundreds of thousands of dollars in fees for the city of Tucson's representation. The only loser was Tucson's taxpayers and the public's trust. Then Rahina and the mayor acquiesced to special interests for profit GCU through TRIO, directing real estate chief Albert Elias to demand a grossly undervalued appraisal of El Rio Golf's 110-acre site for a GCU campus of only 10 acres and arranging consecutive leases to deprive city tax revenue of over $50 million. Cessie Cruz, through attorney Bill Reisner, sued successfully to save El Rio Golf. Some of the predatory insanity against minority open space in El Rio Golf is abominable. No more special interest fire sales, Rahina. Then property 101 in Rahina's ward for police and fire department upgrades had hidden in the $60 million budget for major streets and budget and the Mayor Ducey's and Legislature ADOT annual registration fees were meant to cover infrastructure and upgrades for born properties, the landing.
JP, that.
I-19 and Irvington.
JP, that is the buzzer, so hopefully you're close to them.
I got disrupted two or three times by this.
Okay, we'll give you another 30 seconds.
Thank you, sir. A new assault comes from a year-long avoidance scheduling the open public meeting at a half-baked city of Tucson, Pima County flood control scheme to divert flood runoff without any guaranteed flood insurance relief for area residents by the admission of Pima County Flood Control Manager John Spiker and devaluing El Rio Golf's current profitability by closing a whole nine course and accommodating mosquito ponds dredged into the fairways.
It's not working.
There's an answer. We did it with our neighborhood. It was called the San Antonio Neighborhood Detention Basin. We did eminent domain. We took three blocks out of the neighborhood for drainage and we protected for a 75 to 100-year event for the whole downtown area.
Okay, thank you, JP.
Over 800 properties. We can do it in the El Rio neighborhood as well for those people that are undervalued and underappreciated.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Ruth Beaker.
Ruth Beaker, I was here this afternoon and I've come back this evening to make a plea. Please provide this city a new official meeting format where three parties can come together, use elected officials, staff and the public to be able to have a meaningful, in-depth dialogue to resolve complex issues in a timely manner. Currently, the city provides three meeting formats. We can go to your offices. That takes us six weeks. By the time we email, phone, get rescheduled and the staff doesn't know what we're talking about, you don't know what each other thinks about the issues and that resolves nothing as far as I can tell. We can come to call to the audience. I consider it a good night if you're making eye contact with me, which only three of you are. And if you actually smile or frown, it tells me that you're actually listening to what we're talking about and it's very, very seldom that anything ever gets resolved from this forum. Three, today we tried going to study session. How often does a public group get to come to study session? Once in a million years. And so we feel really extraordinarily privileged to have done that. But at the end, I went home and was watching the streaming and I came vividly aware of what is missing even when we do get to come to study session. We don't get to interact with you. Bonnie was here. We raised our hands and clapped or stood up and clapped, but that's not how you solve problems. And Steve, it's not how you solve problems either when you invite Bonnie and Trig and Amber and the Metro Chamber to come to your office. We appreciate those efforts, but that's not true problem solving of the people who are concerned in this neighbor, in this community. And I listened as I was getting ready to come back and you talked about displacement and gentrification. And there was a request made that you put it on your study session agenda and you asked that staff talk to the coalition of neighbors before you come back and have that study session. No, you should be talking to the coalition. Those are people who are spending lots and lots of time. You mentioned Rahina, the fact that you knew they had documentation of how other places Austin had dealt with this and so on. These are things you need to hear firsthand, not through intermediaries of staff. Staff needs to be there, but we need to have, maybe all of you aren't interested in particular topic. Maybe there's only a group and, Michael Rankin, there has to be a way to do this and meet open meeting law. I don't want to hear that there isn't. We need to find a way to talk to each other in this community.
Thank you, Ruth.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, my name is David Johnson. I am the vice president of Turf Paradise. First, I'd like to just say thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you. Let you know that we are very excited. We are working together with Rito Park to find a solution to all these issues and hopefully come to some form of resolution so that we can bring this item back to you at the next meeting. We understand and respect the decision to continue this item, so again, just want to say thank you for this opportunity and hopefully see you again on June 4th so we can address this item finally.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate it.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am a member of Trig Tucson Residence for Responsive Government and I strongly support the organization's efforts to reactivate neighborhood and area plans. Having served as a principal planner for the city, I helped draft many of these plans. I experienced firsthand the strong, committed and dedicated residents in formulating policies that would be utilized and incorporated in proposed development in their neighborhoods. These dedicated residents did not expect that their hard work would be shelved. For too long, these plans have been ignored. With respect to neighborhood and public input, the city, particularly Ward One, has once again failed us. The joint city and county El Rio Wash Drainage Project that impacts West Side neighborhoods and urban green spaces has been in the works for over two years without input from affected neighborhoods and concerned stakeholders. We were promised on June 29th, 2018, that the planned project would be put on hold for a year in order to work with neighbors, golf course operators, golfers and other stakeholders in planning the project. We have emails obtained from a public records request that I submitted that shows the city staff tried to engage Ward One office regarding this project but were ignored. Nothing happened until last week. You may have read in the newspaper article last week about a meeting on this topic. What the paper failed to report was that the meeting was solely to showcase the project that was scheduled to commence in June, two weeks from that meeting date. The design does not eliminate the flooding or provide relief to the affected property owners by removing their properties from the flood plain regulations and the insurance implications, nor does it benefit from any input from the public. The newspaper also did not report that the city would not address questions from those in attendance at that meeting, even though there were city staff members in attendance, including an assistant city manager. West Side neighbors deserve the same respect that other wards and neighborhoods receive. Additionally, the paper did not report that the 40-plus diverse group of people in attendance, neighborhood residents, environmentalists, golfers, interested residents, provided well-thought-out suggestions and alternatives that would address their concerns. This is a request today to stop the project, to allow those affected and interested individuals time to research, review the work that has been done and work to a viable solution that will address the entire flooding issue. The project should not be a stopgap solution, but rather a master plan project that addresses the entire watershed and related issues. Today, you have an opportunity to practice what you articulated at the study session in response to Trig, and that is that you are committed to public input. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia.
Yep, I'm still here. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members, staff members and members of the audience, and happy birthday to Sophia. She's an awesome singer. My name is Yolanda Herrera, lifelong Southside resident. I'm encouraged, I was encouraged today to hear some of the comments I. today to hear some of the comments I heard during the study session to working better with neighborhoods and community. But I'm here today to talk a little bit about my experience with Planning and Development Services, or lack of customer service. The wait time transferred, more wait time, no real option to speak to a real person, recorded messages, the fact that they assume everyone has a computer or is tech savvy, call back forty-eight hours, explain that. No one answers after 2:00 PM due to staffing problems. I would suggest you all call the different departments, not direct lines, to see what the general public deals with and why we get so upset and so frustrated. On another note, May thirteenth, our beloved Peace Garden located in the Manuel Herrera Junior Park was vandalized, worse than ever this time, and in broad daylight about 4:30 PM. It could have been worse if some neighborhood youth had not alerted my sister and brother-in-law, Becky and Ricky Tero, to go check out what was happening and chase them off. Where the Sunnyside Neighborhood Association is a nonprofit 501(c)(3), we have no funds to replace the damage that was done. We are asking members of the public if they have info on the three individuals responsible to come forward. They can remain anonymous. If people would like to donate, they can contact me or the association. To everyone who came out Saturday to try to restore the garden, thank you. That includes TFD Fire Station fourteen, TPD Lieutenant Roar, my brother James, David Barfus from Bario Nepal, the youth and other community members. However, no one from- we heard nothing from anyone on this council. Stop the hate, do no harm, restore peace in our community, especially for our children, our future. Thank you.
Good evening. My question to the city council is what is the purpose of designating a specific parcel for C1 when arbitrarily you can have a large corporation with endless money and resources go against the will of the people in a community they love and cherish, in this case, the lakes of Castle Rock and their surrounding areas? The people of this community are at a disadvantage. In speaking to the residents of this community, many of them are disillusioned. Breakmax has the planning center to work on their behalf, although who is actually winning? In my opinion, it is certainly not our community. Allow me briefly to identify six ways in which this proposed construction will have a negative impact on our community. Item one, the building of Breakmax will negatively impact the house values in our community. Please note, per Realtor.com titled "There Goes the Neighborhood: Watch Out for the Seven Red Flags When Buying a Home." Red flag number three, the area leans industrial. Any nearby industrial plant should automatically nix the neighborhood and think long and hard before buying across from a car dealership or auto body shop, which attract a lot of car traffic. Boasting seven bays at its site and certainly a higher turnover of vehicles, surely the proposed Breakmax is worse than the body shop mentioned in Realtor.com. In an article, "What Brings Property Values Down," and I quote, "Unfortunately, an area once considered prime can be undesirable, lowering property values in the area. This might involve rezoning, which brings undesirable businesses in the neighborhood and environmental catastrophe, which soils the local east ecosystem, or another event that adversely affects the neighborhood." Item number two, the planning center indicates their marketing brochure that Breakmax has successfully integrated into other neighborhoods such as Camp Lowell and Swan and Oracle Crossing. However, what they fail to mention is none of these locations have residential homes directly across the street from them, as would the proposed new construction site, including the one on Speedway and Pantano, which is in the general vicinity of the proposed location. I have pictures of all these locations. One of the benefits of residing on the east side is that it is a quiet residential area, a sharp contrast from the aforementioned Breakmax locations. Item three, also the difference between this proposed location and the other three Breakmax location is the fact that there is going to be parking across the access road, making it increasingly more dangerous traveling on the access road because the vehicles which need to be serviced will have to cross in between the access road. I have provided pictures clearly showing the access road. Now, item four, noise is also a concern, since there will be air tools regularly used by this Breakmax, which will disturb the peace and relaxed atmosphere of the lakes of Castle Rock residents. There is also a sharp contrast, excuse me, between the other locations and this proposed location, which are the fourteen lakes. In a physics magazine it states, "Not only is there a lack of obstruction, but sound travels further over water unless it's lost up in the air and more it ends up in your ears or your neighbors." Item five, I'm almost done. "The building of Breakmax will increase traffic, making it increasingly more dangerous exiting the west gate of Castle Rock. It is my understanding that a traffic light is not feasible." Item six, filing construction of this Breakmax will obstruct the views of the Catalina Mountains, so beloved are the residents of this community. Once this eyesore is installed, there is nothing that we can do but include this monstrosity in our view of the beautiful mountain range. Instead of the big, beautiful Catalina Mountains, we will have the red and yellow blaring lights of Breakmax. Breakmax has indicated they will landscape between the building to enhance the curb appeal, and the building will have the appearance of a retail store.
Okay, Ms. McFarland.
I'm almost, I'm sorry, I'm almost done. But let's be honest, by no means is it ever going to look like a retail store. The residents of the lakes of Castle Rock have no qualms about growth in our community. In fact, a few years ago, they were to build an office space, and we had no objection to the building of an office. In fact, we would welcome them. This is certainly not the case with Breakmax. We implore the city council not to approve the building of Breakmax based on the aforementioned examples. And I have pictures, though, and I have the articles.
You can hand them to the clerk. Mary Kelso, you're up.
And I'd like to thank Ted Przelski from Councilman Cunningham's office for giving me any information that I requested.
Hi, Honorable Mayor, council members. Again, I'm Mary Kelso. I'm with AFSCME 449. I'm representing the blue-collar workers for the city of Tucson. I live in Tucson. I've lived here since nineteen seventy-three. I raised my girls here. I worked for the city. I worked for the state, and now I work for AFSCME full-time. First off, I want to thank each and every one of you for allowing me to come up here and speak. And you know, I've been up here quite a few times, and I've complained and I begged. This time, I want to thank you personally for taking the blue-collar workers seriously, okay? And Mr. Ortega, I want to thank you and your staff for putting such work into what you presented to us. That meant so much to us. Joyce, thank you. That meant so much. And I'm still going through it, by the way. You know, it means so much to us that you've taken us seriously, you're helping us, you're helping those blue-collar workers because they have worked hard for the city. And we are by no means finished, okay? I mean, this is a great start, and, you know, I don't want to hold up anything because of not getting everybody included in this, but I am so grateful. I, you know, I want to give each and every one of you a big hug, you know, right now. And I don't normally say that. So, quite honestly, I am just so pleased. And the second group that has come through, I am looking at it. And like I said, it's hard. I don't have a lot of time. I've been in meetings all day today, so I'm going to try to get through it, but I am finding some anomalies that haven't been pointed out, and I would like to be able to sit down with you guys to go through them and see, you know, if we can't work out something with it. But from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of the blue-collar workers, thank you so much. I know you don't hear that from me a lot, but thank you. That means a lot to us. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Appreciate it. All right, let's move on to item seven.
Consent Agenda, items A through H.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you're requested to read the consent agenda.
Item A is approval of minutes. Item B is Tucson Code amending Chapter Eight, expanding the scope of cases to be set before Pima County Justices of the Peace. Item C is a license agreement with Fat Beam LLC for fiber optic communications equipment in right-of-way. Item D is a labor agreement extension with the Communication Workers of America. Item F is a final plat S eighteen dash zero six seven Thorpe Acres Lots One A and Lot Two A. Item G is a final plat S nineteen dash zero zero six at ten fourteen North Seventh Avenue. Item H is Boards, Committees, and Commissions amending Tucson Code Chapter Ten A relating to membership of the Commission on Food Security, Heritage, and Economy. Item I is Real Property amending and assigning the lease agreement with Pima Community College at four oh one North Benita Avenue.
Have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'd move that we move the consent agenda.
A motion, second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on that matter? If not, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Kaczak?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Fevers?
Aye.
Items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of seven zero. Item eight.
Item eight is a public hearing, application by Turf Paradise for an off-track betting pair of mutual wagering site at Midtown Tavern, thirty-six twenty North First Avenue, was continued from the meeting of April ninth. Report from city manager.
Councilmember Durham?
The status of HB twenty-five forty-seven is, it still hasn't been signed by the governor. There was an attempt to, it was amended recently. And so, until it has been signed by the governor, we can't proceed on this matter. So, I've asked for it to be continued to the meeting of June fourth.
Okay. Got a motion to continue this public hearing to the meeting of June fourth. We've got a second. Any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? We'll continue that till June fourth. Hopefully, we'll have a bill by then. Item nine.
Item nine is a public hearing, City of Tucson Recommended Annual Budget for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty. Report from city manager, hearing.
City manager's communication number one sixty-nine, dated May twenty-one, is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the fiscal year two thousand twenty recommended budget. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. I don't have anybody wishing to speak on this matter. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard? If not, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion, second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This public hearing is closed. The tentative adoption of fiscal year two thousand twenty budget is scheduled for later this evening. I think it might be next. Another legally required public hearing is scheduled for June fourth. For the purpose of public comment on the budget is tentatively adopted at tonight's mayor and council meeting. Let's move to item ten.
Finance, tentative adoption of fiscal year two thousand twenty budget. Report from city manager, resolution number two-three-zero-two-zero.
City manager's communication number one sixty-six, dated May twenty-one, is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you're requested to read resolution twenty-three-zero-twenty by number and title only.
Resolution number two-three-zero-two-zero relating to finance, adopting a tentative budget for the two thousand nineteen twenty fiscal year, and fixing times and places, confirming time and place to conduct a public hearing on said budget, to adopt the final budget in a special meeting, to fix time and place to determine the primary and secondary tax rates.
What's the council's pleasure?
Your Honor, I move that we pass, tentatively pass and adopt a budget for two thousand, for fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty.
Okay, that's resolution two-three-zero-two-zero. We've got a motion, second. Any discussion on that matter? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Kaczak?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Fevers?
Resolution two-three-zero-two-zero passes by a vote of seven zero. The final hearing on the budget is scheduled for the meeting of June fourth. Move on to item eleven.
Zoning, C nine dash nineteen dash zero three, town west, First Avenue, R two to C one. City managers report, report from zoning examiner.
City manager's communication number one fifty-six, dated May twenty-one, is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to rezone approximately three point zero three acres from R two to C one zoning. The rezoning site is comprised of five parcels located west of First Avenue, south of Limberloss Drive, and north of Cayenne, Arizona. Staff recommends authorization of C one zoning subject to certain conditions. Zoning examiner has recommended approval of C one zoning. Is there an applicant or representative present on this property? Could you come forward, please? Could you state your name and whether you're the owner or representative, and if so?
My name is Raúl Reyes. I'm an architect. I'm the owner representative.
Okay. Are you agreeable to the proposed requirements of the?
Yes, we are.
Okay. What's the council's pleasure? Councilmember Durham?
I move we authorize the request for rezoning as recommended by the zoning examiner.
Second.
Got a motion in second on that matter. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes. Thank you, sir, for joining us this evening. Let's go to item twelve.
Zoning, C nine dash nineteen dash zero two, Breakmax, Tancaverdi Road, C one to C two. City managers report, report from zoning examiner.
City manager's communication number one fifty-eight, dated May twenty-one, is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to rezone approximately one point oh six acres from C one to C two zoning. The rezoning site is located on the north side of Tancaverdi Road, east of Catalina Highway. Staff recommends authorization of C two zoning subject to certain conditions. The zoning examiner recommends approval of C two zoning. Is the applicant or representative present? Ma'am, could you state your name and who you represent?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Linda Morales. I'm with the planning center. I'm the representative of Breakmax.
And are you, is your client agreeable to the proposed requirements set forth by the zoning examiner and staff?
Mr. Mayor, yes. We have worked very, very hard with the adjacent neighbors and with the neighborhood association. And as a result, you'll see conditions eleven through fifteen are very specific to the site and address a lot of the concerns that the speaker called to the audience addressed. I'd be happy to go into any of those other ones if you would like, but we are, we are very pleased with the conditions and the support that we have.
Okay. What's the council's pleasure? Councilmember Cunningham?
All right, I have a few questions for Ms. Morales.
Sure.
Before we proceed. Do we have, in the one hundred and fifty-foot zone, what is the approval and protest ratio?
There is one approval and no protests within the one hundred and fifty feet.
And how about the total?
The total is, we have, I believe, five approvals and one protest on record. Is that correct? Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
The property was originally zoned C one.
Yes.
One of the concerns, when I spoke with the neighbors about it, was if it went C one, were there limitations on the times that a place could be open as a C one?
Councilmember Cunningham, no, there were no restrictions on that zoning. It was a straight C one, so it could be twenty-four hours.
As a result of this zoning, has Breakmax put times on there?
Absolutely. Condition twelve limits the hours of operation for the automotive use from seven AM to seven PM.
I wanted to make sure that Breakmax, you know, working on cars can get loud. I want to make sure that there's some sound mitigation built in.
Absolutely. And that is another, one of the conditions that are some of the conditions you see. And the design of the site is actually so that it does have only openings for the automotive use to the back. Behind there is the shopping center and the self-storage, so the noise can only exit out the back. Again, the front is designed to look like a retail space, so it's only the office that is accessible from the front of the building that, that is the side that faces toward the lakes of Castle Rock.
So, the vehicles, the bays face north?
Yes. They faced behind the building. There was a concern that was addressed, or that was brought up, that we would be blocking the access lane to the rest of the shopping center, and that is absolutely not the case. We do still have the driveway going through there. We have parking off of that, and our bays come off of that, but there would, that would still be left open for people that are coming to and from the shopping center. And the other condition that addresses specifically the noise, and this was brought up by, actually, our neighbor across the street, Mel Silverman, who has some experience in automotive himself. He had asked that we would muffle the equipment, their mufflers.
Yeah, I spoke to him, or I spoke, my staff spoke with him, so we had some interesting information from that.
So, that's condition thirteen.
My next one was, is, on the east side of the property, there seems to be an apartment complex, but there's this narrow area where there's, is that commercial property in between the apartments?
This site is wrapped by a self-storage, so that is a single-story self-storage unit that's along the east, that's between our east boundary and the apartments. And then, then also there's self-storage.
So, the site is.
It's all that seam.
The site is commercial on all three sides?
All three sides.
All right.
And then Tancaverdi's.
Here's the last piece, and I did it myself. I actually went to Castle Rock and drove and tried to make left turns and tried to envision. I also looked at the traffic count, and they're expecting the forty-two trips a day. I actually don't, I am not crazy about the left turn angle with the Breakmax there. I'm really, I think there will be some traffic mitigation we're going to have to do in the future. future, but based on the holistic of all the testimony and all the neighbors giving input, I'm comfortable moving this ahead, except I really want, I really think we should probably put some type of traffic study in. I'm not sure if I want left turns coming out of the Breakmax. That's the main thing that I, my concern is, I don't think we're going to be able to do that, because there's no way that if people are turning left out of the Breakmax, there's only one egress for the Castle Rock folks, and they're making that left turn heading north. Well, they're, they're facing north, and then they're heading...
Heading west.
They're heading west.
Or east.
So, I'm not a big fan of allowing people to exit that Breakmax and turning, going, to go east. They need to go up to the intersection. That's the one thing I'll tell you, that I just see that, I see that as going to be a problem.
If I may, Councilmember Cunningham, we did do a preliminary traffic study, and there would be a traffic impact analysis that would be required as part of the development plan's submittal, and I, there was a specific condition that was put in about the striping, and that was at the request of the neighbors that are directly across the way, or across Tancaverty from us, that that's, that's, it's very specific to the way they wanted that striped. If you would like to leave that open to analysis, we would have to modify or strike that condition, which I'm not terribly comfortable with, given that the Peters are not here to hear that, but, but yeah, we could maybe word that so it's subject to approval by a traffic impact report.
As long as there's a traffic impact study report in, in the construction phase, I think we're, I think it's going to cover it.
Yeah, I...
But the bottom line is, is that that's the one piece that it's dangerous.
Ms. Morales, is there a traffic impact study required? Is that one of the conditions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. With the development plan, there's a traffic report.
All right. That'll let us know. Okay.
All right, so those are, those are my concerns on it with that. I move that we pass and adopt the recommendation to Zoning Examiner.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Oh, yes. I really appreciate you talking about my, Ms. McFarland, I really appreciate your input on this, and I think that, I know that we're on the wrong side or that we're on opposite sides of this one, but we'll work together in the future, and I'll work with you to make sure that, especially the traffic piece, is worked out, okay? I've reviewed, I've reviewed very much of the material, and a lot of neighbors were not exactly in, some of the neighbors were very supportive of this, I just want to say that, so it...
No. Okay. We've, public hearings closed. Councilmember Cunningham?
We'll talk about it offline, but, but thank you for your input on this.
Okay. Anybody, any further discussion from the council? Hearing none. It's a voice, voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Let's move to item 13.
Zoning, C9-16-14 Air Concepts, 22nd Street, R2, C1 and C3 to I1. Ordinance Adoption Report from City Manager, Ordinance Number 11650.
City Manager's Communication Number 159, dated May 21, is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you're requested to read Ordnance 11650 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11650 relating to zoning, amending zoning district boundaries in the area located at the northwest corner of 22nd Street and Cherry Avenue, east of the Kino Parkway, in case C9-16-14 Air Concepts, 22nd Street, R2, C1 and C3 to I1, and setting an effective date.
What's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, move to pass and adopt Ordnance 11650.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion on this matter? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Febrys?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Kaczak?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Ordnance 11650 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 14.
Economic Development, authorizing a G-plat lease agreement for the Tucson redevelopment project formerly Hotel del Sol, continued from the meeting of May 7th. Report from City Manager, Resolution Number 23030.
City Manager's Communication Number 164, dated May 21, is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you're requested to read Resolution 23023 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23030 relating to economic development incentives and real property, authorizing and approving the government property lease excise tax G-plat lease agreement between the City of Tucson City and 2438 North Pallaverty Avenue LLC for the redevelopment of the Tucson Located at 960 South Freeway project.
What's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Romero?
I just want to add that this project will have an estimated impact of $3.1 million in capital improvements alone, and that the reinvestment of this hotel on the west side is welcomed by the neighborhood and, of course, by the city, and I'm looking forward to when it's done. It's going to be a beautiful project, and will continue to further the Gem Show Row concept that I have been talking about for a long time, and will secure amazing space for the Gem Show for future years. So, with that, I'd like to move that we pass and adopt Resolution 23030.
Got a second? Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Febrys?
Aye.
Mr. Kaczak?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Resolution 23030 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 15.
City Administration, approving the appointment of Colin Boyce as the Information Technology Department Director and the appointment of Robert Scott Clark as the Planning and Development Services Department Director. Report from City Manager, Ordinance Number 11651 and 11652.
City Manager's Communication Number 165, dated May 21, is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you're requested to read Ordnance 11651 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11651 relating to Information Technology Department, approving the appointment of Colin Boyce as the Director of the City of Tucson Information Technology Department, fixing compensation and declaring an emergency.
What is the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and adopt Ordnance Number 11651 and welcome Mr. Colin Boyce as the Director of the City of Tucson Information Technology Department.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion on that matter?
Welcome, Colin.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Kaczak?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.